Yeah, or just when Tommy speaks.
Just when I speak.
We are now recording.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of December 3rd of 2018. Has everybody had a chance to review them? They were sent out to us previously via email. Alright.
It's three of December 3rd and four of April.
Alright, we're gonna do them all in one shot, okay?
I'm supposed to be approving that from three previous meetings.
Okay, that's December 3rd, March 25th, and April 1st. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Alright, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, let me take a moment and sign these.
I think one of them needs to be Mr. Nash, because you were absent one of them. That's got the vice chairman on there.
Okay.
He can stop at that one.
This is the April 1, April 1. I was under the weather. Thank you.
That's well done, thank you very much.
Alright, next on the agenda is the request for a conditional use permit by Mr. Hinkle for to have apartments at 406 South Main Street.
I'll make a brief presentation. 406 South Main Street is what used to be Flower and Foliage, is that correct? It's located adjacent to the town's parking lot, which is adjacent to the post office on the west side of South Main. It's currently a...
What's on the other side?
Pardon?
What's on the other side?
Uh, I believe it is a private residence owned by the Patel family who run the hotel. As you may or may not know, the town at one point did modify its ordinances so that apartments on the first and second floors now in the general business district do require a conditional use permit. I think the biggest issue at that time was the parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, you were here, and your gentleman may remember. But Mr. Hinkle, if you're familiar with that property, it goes all the way through to Brown Street, so there's adequate parking there. His request is for a conditional use permit in the general business district to allow two apartments, one upstairs and one downstairs. And that would be a total of four total parking spaces, which I don't think he has any trouble providing on the Brown Street side. And you do have an entrance on the Brown Street side as well.
And an exit as well.
There's already an entrance there.
I guess I have to abstain from voting. I'm gonna be the property manager.
Pardon?
I'll be the property manager, but I can't move.
Let the record reflect, abstain when it comes down.
Abstain, okay.
Is there any public comment regarding this request? Any questions for Mr. Hinkle?
I'll make a motion that we grant a special use.
Okay, is there a second?
Do we wanna open and close the process?
I'm sorry.
We'll do that first.
Okay, we have to open that. Okay.
We'll just, okay, you have opened and closed.
We've opened and closed, yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Watkins, you are making the motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the change.
Okay. Can I second? I'll second then. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Alright. We are step one, okay. Now, the second item on the agenda is the request for a conditional use permit by Progeny LLC and Cypress Cove LLC for mini warehouse development on Lester Street. Okay. Let's open the public hearing.
We shall open the public hearing.
Oh, you want me to tell you what the deal is?
Well, you already did, you already did it once.
I think you're gonna get a chance to speak, dig it?
I don't care to speak, I will gladly speak.
He can give you the details.
Okay.
What we have now is it's zoned R3 currently. The property is currently zoned R3. The request is verbatim almost exactly what we did with Eric Nash over on Northwest Avenue. If you remember last month, we had a request for mini storage or mini warehouses, and this would be a request very similar to that. You can give him the details and the size and all those kinds of things when you're operating. The same proffered conditions were provided by the Dorans. And I told them to offer exactly what Eric did, with screening, lighting, on-street parking is not permissible and those kinds of things. That's included in that application. And if anybody's inquiring, we have a second part to the request that we'll handle after the public hearing. But the request that is before us tonight for conditional use is specific to this part of the property, the mini warehouse portion. This portion of the property is already permissible in by right, which would be a townhouse development, okay?
Okay.
That's permissible, that's in the R3 district, that's the intention. It's the mini warehouses. And again, they can give you more details, just do exact numbers and all that sort of thing.
Okay.
I did have a call, Philip, where you hold that up here. I did have a call about, okay, so for the audience here, this is the mini warehouse, correct?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Now, there are some properties through here, and there's like a row of trees. Is this going to, are you taking the trees down? Or will this row of trees stay? And how close is it gonna be to these property owners?
You can, without being, boy, I've gone right in there. Mine, it costs me money to take trees down. My hope, and of course with our background in landscaping, I would prefer to leave the tree if possible.
And that would be a buffer for the adjoining property?
Now, understanding too, that during construction, we've also got experience undermining root system for trees and realizing that you're leaving a dead man walking more or less with this tree, that's gonna be a problem for both properties in the near future. So, we'll use our best judgment, of course, to save any trees that we can on any part of the property, just to soften it all a lot. Again, going back to our landscape background, but I don't, I can't really say definitively whether we build or will not leave a particular tree.
Are you, is it gonna be real close? Are y'all going right up to the property line?
Hold up, we're gonna scale it right now. What's your scale?
Thirty.
Thirty, I get it. If you hang my glasses off there, wherever they may be. As shown, the improvements would be about forty feet off the property line, adjacent to the Daniel property.
The building itself.
The building itself, correct. And then off of the Bessie, Erbys property would be more like fifty-four feet or thereabouts from Annie's property. About thirty-six feet.
Does she have property on that side of the street?
She does. There's a house over there, if you look at it again. Scale and you can see about thirty-five, thirty-six feet.
But isn't it a drive that's going around that?
It looks like it's gonna be paved.
It's a, it's a gravel drive around it as access. Instead of a paved surface, which is impermeable, increases runoff, there's a whole lot of other things, including leaving gravel. And understanding too, that the consultant firm we use to do this, we've actually worked with on several stream restoration projects before. So, his background is biofiltration and all of those things, and that's kinda where his specialty comes in. And the only reason we chose him is to have this delineated wetland properly addressed and to reduce the impermeable surface as much as possible. For instance, this asphalt paved road, which is not in question of what we're talking about right now, we have to pave this, and which creates impermeable surfaces, which determines the size of our sediment basin. But the fact that we are leaving this gravel actually helps the environmental impact of it all. It really actually makes the possibility of keeping some or any of those trees a reasonable expectation.
Why don't we put this over here so the guys can see also if everybody's gonna stand around?
Is this what we're...
But the one y'all have does not have the adjoining property owner's name on it.
I see. And it doesn't have the street, again, the exact look, precise location. Okay, Oak Street there. Where are the existing...
Where is Garden Villa?
Oh, okay.
The access road behind is the alleyway behind Garden Villa will be improved.
So Northwest is on the bottom.
No, no, Lester Street is here.
Lester, okay.
West entrance road is all that.
Right there, okay.
And so, what is it, Mr. Erbys, Mr. Monkhor's store shit?
Erby Monkhor's store shit.
Right there, okay, gotcha.
And then their apartment complex, the Garden Villas, is right here.
Gotcha. Okay.
One thing I would like to address, I'm all full of growth in our town.
Do you, do you wanna open the public hearing?
Tell you what, let's, let us let them do their presentation, and then we'll have comment. We'll move it that, do it that way. Okay.
I was gonna pass that down.
Barbara, would you like to?
Can Barbara take a look at it?
Okay.
Now, this has the names on it, that's the, shows the adjoining property.
These are the existing apartments. This is where he's wanting to put the new mini storage. Oak Street side, these, these lots right here on Oak Street, that Oak Street, this is the Lester Street.
This is an area just outside around those storage areas.
These are the existing apartments.
This is a gravel drive.
Development of townhouses he wants to...
I wonder how wide that is, that's probably, thirty feet or something.
Proffered condition applied to these, where he's got, there's no lighting that can be faced.
And this is existing.
Residential area, screening, no on-street parking. And no boat or camper storage with that proper licensure and all. This would be a gravel driveway, go around, but he's required to maintain a buffer all the way around the building. Not a buffer, but a, it'd be a six-foot fence or, it's gotta be some kind of fencing or...
Do you remember with the old wild woman down there?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I guess, thank you guys for considering this tonight. Basically, what we are, we bought this property, it seems like a year ago, but I think it was closer to eight years ago. And the purpose of us buying it was to develop it ultimately. And through the planning process, we realized there were some environmentally sensitive areas that were just hard to responsibly access in the development mindset. So, we decided about a year and a half ago to try to start developing a plan that could be environmentally sensitive and still help us maximize any, you know, profits or yields that we could have from the property as we originally bought it. Mini storage was one thing that I felt like, we all felt like the town of Blackstone needed. There's a lot of, or a limited amount of vacancy in town. And one caveat to what we're gonna try to do is to make all or part of these climate-controlled mini storage. So, that's something I'm not aware currently exists in the town of Blackstone. That is our desire to try to do that. You know, there's a whole lot of planning that needs to take place, and funding needs to take place before that happens. But that is our goal here, to currently utilize an existing entranceway behind the, what do you, the villa, Garden Villa?
So, Garden Villa is right here, correct?
Coming, coming off Lester Street.
And there's a little tiny driveway next to it, and y'all are gonna improve that.
That driveway is currently a...
To lead to the...
That's correct. That garden, that driveway is a dump right now. It's not, not in great shape, so it would obviously have to be improved, have to be widened. There'll have to be a small, you can see a dark black line diagonally across it. That'll be a reinforced concrete pipe to divert the water across and underneath the drive there. So, the gray hashed area is gonna be gravel drive, the blocked out white pieces there that you see, the rectangular shapes. Those will be the general footprint of the storage units. We're anticipating as many as sixty-nine storage units possibly. That's assuming they're all ten-by-tens. If we go ten-by-twenty or various other dimensions, it could, it could alter the number, but the square footage generally will be the same. Certainly, any condition permit that we get here, you know, we would be held to that square footage and that floor plan or that footprint of the building.
Will they be built in one, will it be continuing construction or one shot?
My thought is that it would be at most two mobilizations for that. So, the first of which would be the first kinda C-shaped, or I guess that's more of a J, the perimeter piece around the outside. That's correct. So, and then the second phase possibly would be the other leg of it, and then the other small piece down below the coal pipe would be those two extra pieces could potentially be added in the future. Once, you know, we don't wanna flood the market with rental units and, you know, have them built and nobody in them. So, we want to let the saturation rate kinda catch up to, you know, what we have there to rent for people. So, that right now is very simply our plan to do. We've, like Philip had mentioned, our proffers we offered are in line with what has been accepted elsewhere. Privacy fence against, you know, different zoning areas we provided here, so. It's, it can be either one, I think is what I've...
The ordinance says it's six-foot.
Privacy fence.
Privacy fence or impermeable evergreen shrubs of six-foot tall.
You said fence, I just wanted to make sure.
So, yeah, I mean, one or the other. Now, the fence, in my view, is the most expensive of the two options, so that's the reason I mentioned that. And it's certainly the most, it has the most instant gratification of screening to it, so, other than that...
So now, does the six feet of its plantings, do they have to be six feet immediately, or is it...
I think we went through this one time before, not too long ago, so I do think that when planted, they should be as, like a Leland Cypress that...
I know some folks that can do that.
They can be completely full, but they certainly need to be as six-foot tall as much as possible.
And that's, and that's the standard. We've done screenings and naturalization plantings, you know, and developments before, and that's pretty standard. Six to eight foot, they call it bolling brolap tree, is typically what we can plant. You can also supplement it with some potted shrubs. So, and I'm, I'm willing to work with any neighbors that would prefer to have one versus the other, for whatever reason. I'm open to that, as the council sees fit.
What materials will you use to build these? What would their appearance be?
It'll be, right now, and again, we're very early in the planning, budgeting parts of this. The two major options on the table are cinder block, so masonry, cinder block, CMU walls with a metal tin roof. I'm leaning more towards, because their, our intention and hope is for them to be climate-controlled, for them to be corrugated metal sides and roof, and be wood framed so that we can insulate the interior walls more easily than we could if you just laid, you know, regular CMU block.
What size range will these apartments be?
Not apartments, they're storage units. Right now, I think in my application, I estimated, if I'm not mistaken, sixty-nine units at approximately forty-five dollars a unit, which is an average price for what is being utilized into town today. So, it's an annual...
Forty-five dollars a month?
Forty-five dollars a month per unit, times sixty-nine units. And if my math's correct, I think that turns out to be about thirty-six thousand dollars of tax, tax base, taxable, you know, revenue that the town could realize. Yes, ma'am?
Let's ask, is there a different setback on this? We notice it gets wider here.
Philip, you're welcome to jump in here, if you, you probably know it better now. The setback on that is from the buildings, is it thirty feet?
I'll tell you exactly how much it is this second.
Okay. That was, I do know that that, that portion with the Daniel property, the, see how much narrower it is?
So, the setback is really here, from the building to the property line?
Building, not the true...
Not the driveway?
Driveway, correct. So, the setback is, if I'm not mistaken, is thirty feet. It might actually be less than that, but, you know, we certainly took that into account when we, we tried to anyway, to address that. And understanding that the Daniel property is the narrowest portion of that, and would be the, would be the limiting factor. Correct, yes, ma'am.
That setback, thirty feet, I bought from the day school back twenty years ago. That's, I tried to buy the whole lot, but at the time, they only would sell me thirty feet.
Okay.
And that's the setback.
Oh, I see.
And the, I'm not, I'm certainly not disputing anything Mr. Daniel says. I do know that the hashed dark line, it appears to be the property boundary that you guys see, is a recently surveyed and verified boundary survey by local survey. So, if that, if there's a dispute there, I guess that's a completely separate issue. But I don't believe, I think what we have here accurately reflects the deed and tax records. Now, I know Mr. Daniel said there's a portion there that he's being taxed on, that he doesn't actually own, or something to that effect. I think he desired it cleaned up, as well as I know that that property boundary is that.
Looking under the definition of mini warehouse to see if it has a specific setback, and it does not for that particular use. And if you go to the R3 zoning district, I think we're on that. The yard requirements and the setback requirements. It gives us a front setback. It does not specifically give me a rear for mini storage warehouses, for the residential component, that's very defined and very clear.
What does it say on the residential component?
Gotta go under the townhouse side of things. Just says thirty-five feet or more from any street right away. We got that. Thirty-five from the street, frontage. Single and two-family dwellings conform to residential district R2, that's not the case here, townhouses. But I can tell you, if you were in a single family and applied back to R2, you'd take the fifteen percent of the street frontage, and that's your side setback. So, if you get a hundred feet of frontage in a typical residential lot, it'd be fifteen feet on the other side. I think maybe we do need to clarify tonight, as best you can, how far off each property line that you would...
Whatever that, that map right there, I mean, that can be tweaked, obviously, a few feet here or there. But it looks like the tightest tolerance we had there, Philip, was what, thirty-five feet?
Thirty-six feet, I think that was Annie's line.
Thirty-six?
I'm sorry, but I don't see a specific setback requirement for the residential, it's defined. But for mini storage warehouses in R3, it does not have a specified setback.
Even as it's, if we were to use the residential definition applied to this, do we meet or exceed that, in your view?
I mean, the only frontage that you would have is either on Oak Street or Lester Street. And you're, I mean, just by looking at it, you'd be two hundred feet of frontage. So, fifteen percent of that, be thirty feet on each side, approximately, I guess, if we've got something to fall on. Bring it here, and I'll scale the road frontage real quick.
Will there be twenty-four hour a day access to the units?
Yeah, about three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Lester Street.
Of that portion of it?
Long the grass will get to three hundred and sixty feet, and it's actually a little more, about three seventy.
So, but what I'm starting at is the portion that we're asking, like, you know, where this is.
This section?
Correct. Just the portion with the mini warehouse.
Forty feet in that section, so fifteen percent of a hundred and forty feet.
And we're at thirty-six. I'm open to do whatever we think's reasonable.
I just don't have a defined, or definition, or setback.
Could it be proffered?
I think it should, absolutely. I think it should be something that is, whatever defined, twenty-five feet, thirty feet, forty feet, whatever it is. I think it needs to be codified somehow.
Should it be, well, codified or proffered?
Proffered, that would codify it, but then it would be memorialized in the minutes.
That's fine, okay.
Are we, are we at about thirty-six feet and make, just even number, make it thirty-five feet? I'd be real with that.
I think that's the closest one you're showing, which would be to Ms. Williams's line, based on the scale. And make, say thirty-five feet to any property line with any structure, or adjacent property line with any structure. Because you do have these other units with that one right there.
And that would, that would probably give us as much setback as you would ever have from, from anything, am I correct?
More setbacks than you necessarily would have with a residence or an apartment building.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's more...
There's as much setback there, as I understand it, is if I was trying to put a townhome building right there. And that's kinda where that, that line came in. Was my desire when I started kinda...
An apartment building would only have to be twenty-five feet off the property line.
The building itself, correct.
Pardon?
The building itself would only be...
The building itself, and then one foot for each over twenty-five feet tall. Each side yard is a minimum of twenty-five feet, plus one foot for each foot of height over twenty-five. You can go to thirty-five with multifamily in Blackstone, okay? So, it would be twenty-five feet plus a foot for each one additional thirty-five feet, if you had a multiple-story building. But twenty-five feet would be, if he was proposing to put apartments there, he would be required to be twenty-five feet off the property.
And the proffer is thirty-five feet to adjacent property?
Probably last truck.
Adjacent property line, yes. But that, that doesn't apply to this one, which would only interfere with those of his current properties. And I think he's got the thirty-five on this side, I'm not sure. And, yeah, you're right there, thirty-four, thirty-five feet from that first one. So, you would just have to ensure that it was thirty-five feet, and you'd just have to slide it?
Okay.
You see how I did that?
Yeah.
Do y'all have any que...
I mean, is it a, should I, a few questions from...
Yeah, well, I'm gonna see if there's any from, okay, now.
So, he's, he's willing to proffer that?
Yes.
Correct, yes, sir.
My two main concerns, I know my land runs right behind those mini warehouses, is definitely need a buffer. And I know a fence is more expensive, but it's gonna be open twenty-four hours a day.
Sure.
I'm into the house, trying to sleep at midnight, and here comes vehicles through there, and the light shining all through the house. Another concern, and it's still happening today, the residents in that apartment ain't wanna walk through my yard any time of the day or night. With that buffer up there, fence that'll keep all the foot traffic, I appreciate what you could do there. Another concern, and Philip's very aware of it, we have a water problem in that neighborhood. I've got probably two hundred-year-old oak trees back in the back that they get ready to take up. And they said they were gonna try to conserve as many as they could. Well, those oaks, they're absorbing a lot of moisture right now. We take them out, I don't wanna have a water problem down the road coming on my property. That's my biggest two concerns. Like I said before, I'm all full of growth in our community. I think it's a good idea. Is there anything you wanna add to that?
Mr. Daniel, to address your concern about the water, I agree with you. Some of those trees could possibly increase, decrease the amount of absorption on your property. But you can kinda see the gray scale contour lines under here, and right now, there's a drainage ditch on the backside...
And right now, there's a drainage ditch on the backside. It's actually not on our property. It looks like it's conveying water down about.
Actually, it's all clogged up with leaves right now. It's running from less than, there's no, no, there's no water in it at all.
Right, okay, what, I mean, there is a, a, a look point, a depression there. And there's also, the contour lines are showing a channel actually draining down towards our sediment basin, uh, which is this little cracker here from your line. So it, you can see four fifteen is at the top of the page, four fourteen is at, that's the actual elevation. Four fourteen is at your side yard, you're right. You do not have a lot of elevation change over a hundred and some feet. You got one and a half percent or something like that.
And, and like in my yard, I mean, I've got drain tile in my yard now diverting all the water.
Right.
And it's pretty level back there.
Right.
And if, if you raise it, then it's going to come on me.
Sure, and, and the responsible thing for us to do is not to discharge. We can't legally discharge our waters onto your property. That's, and that's the reason for a lot of, of, of us having to have these contours is to, to show this drainage coming, actually, it's coming off of your property from ours. Now, there may be some residual stuff right at the property line, if it's a break line of some sort, where it, it, it may end up here. But just looking at the contour lines, what you illustrated here, I, I don't see a lot of our site drainage becoming a problem with yours. And, and understanding too, we, I cannot interfere over your property line. I wouldn't, we just not do that. And, and if, if we do need to raise this or, or change, change the elevation in some way, we're going to have to maintain that positive drainage on there. I mean, that's a, at best, it's an ethics situation, you know? And it might even be a legal obligation of ours not to, to convey new water onto your property. Especially with the oversight we're having with ACE, which is Army Corps of Engineers, DEQ, on this because of the other portion of the property, so.
And one other small thing, you, you want to improve the property. Have it at the lapid issue that's on your property.
Well, that's gotta go. I, I, I'll make the deal. If you, if you can let this go, I'll just move.
Tessy pinned it on you day before yesterday or two days before.
Let me get his dog out of there. If you want him.
Put it in the minute.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us about the lights that are going to be visible since this is going to be twenty-four seven? At the old floor shop, we have a security light and it is bright.
Right.
Is, and you're going to need something that will light up this place.
That's correct. Our, it may be a little unorthodox, but with, with our professional experience in landscaping and landscape lighting, what we're hoping to do is to have not so much having three gigantic lights like the town provides, safety lights, security lights like the town provides, but to have a numerous amount of downlighting on the building so that the only real visible light is going to be reflective light off the building, off the ground. Um, and again, understanding that those, you know, maybe the, the roof line is at eight feet. I, I'm not exactly sure how high the roof line would be, but we visualizing those lights high enough where you could get, you know, visibility down and, and light on everything without it being this massive floodlight on everybody's property. Is, is our desire and what we're trying to do here. And, and that's, that was one of the proffered items was that we don't have any lighting focused away from the property. We all be focused at the property. Yes, sir.
Uh, we don't want to be concerned with this. In your construction of this project, uh, we do not want any runoff to our property.
Sure.
And so that's our main concern.
Sure, and you're on the Lester side, not Danny?
Yes.
Okay, and that, in the same situation, uh, with Mr. Daniel? You can see the, the contour line still here. I mean, obviously, we didn't survey all property, but we did get some shots across there so we can kind of determine and make sure that where that runoff is going. You're at elevation four seventeen along the, just about the entire perimeter of property and it's all coming down towards Oak Street. So that type of property is actually drained away from your property. So we, I don't, I understand your concern, but I, I don't, I don't think it's a real problem at all for it to happen. Or to avoid that happening.
Right, but if it does happen, whose responsibility is that?
You get to come in here and yell at Philip and Philip gets to come yelling at you.
So it makes it your responsibility to fix it?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a?
Right. Yes, sir. And understanding too, again, I, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but when, when we come to a house, to landscape, the ma-, first major problem we always deal with, where's the water going? The builders don't think about that. They, they build their house and shingles and they get inside appliances and way to go. We're the ones that got to come in there and figure out how to make water drain over one, one and a half percent grade, you know? Roads, yeah, roads don't hardly, you know, there's some roads that don't, that have more grade than that. So we're, we're very aware and, and sensitive to making sure the water's moving away. I mean, we, we don't want.
Isn't there a, a pipe that's gonna more or less drain from the corner of his property?
That, that's correct. That's, that, that is capturing that and, and. Okay. Well, you can see, Mr. Goldson, right here, reinforced concrete pipe. We haven't, the size of it is not specified yet, but we're thinking it's going to be probably an eighteen inch reinforced concrete pipe. And so you can see four seventeen elevations here, four sixteen come right at it. So all of that water is coming off this property to that corner. We capture, and what it actually turns into, that corner of this Williams property is actually the, I don't want to call it the headwaters, but the beginning of the drainage that creates this delineated wetland here. So all of this water coming to that corner there where we're capturing, you know, probably. So every, our entire plan is under the assumption that this water moves off the Williams property. Any other questions? Concerns, constructive criticism?
I have one I'd like to address to Phil. Um, Mr. Van Bitt. I know we had talked.
I'm here, I'm here.
A while ago.
Yes, sir.
With looks to construction on Lester. What are problems on Oak? Could you foresee in the future sidewalks for the safety of the kids?
I would say long term, not short term, but long term, yeah, I would say that, uh, Oak Street would be a logical place to put some sidewalks on probably your side of the street because the ball fields are on that side of Oak Street as well. Just so everybody knows, the town, I think within the next couple of weeks, we're going to bid out a significant amount of curb and gutter on Oak Street, on Birch Street, now we're at the baseball fields and making a, a circuit around all the baseball fields with antique lights. It's going to be really kind of neat. The state gave us about a half million dollars in grant money and we're going to be putting up about a hundred thousand dollars. And that sidewalk will come down because there's already sidewalk on that side of Oak Street and it just terminated. It's kind of weird, it just stops around that playground. We'll continue that sidewalk on around and I would say logically curb and gutter and sidewalk. I'm a curb and gutter fanatic, I like it because it's cleaner and saves us money and headache with ditches and water and all the above things. But logically, if a sidewalk were going to be built, it'd be built on, I think, on your side of the street logically. But sidewalks, uh, don't cost the property owner anything. The town has waived the fifty percent cost for sidewalks. That's now, and I think we probably, I probably need to come up with a plan. This is where we're going to be putting sidewalks over the next twenty-five years and this is my five year plan, ten years, twenty, fifty. Right now, it's all up in the noggin. We just don't build that much sidewalk, we just don't. Curb and gutter, we do it pretty, pretty regularly, but the sidewalk is a little less. Um, and I don't want to build sidewalks to nowhere. Do a block at a time and then, brrr, here we go. We got another five years before I can get the next block of curb and gutter. So I try not to build sidewalks that don't connect to anything. If you go down on, uh, Eighth Street and Brunswick Avenue, we ran some curb and gutter around, but we didn't do any more sidewalk. We just stopped sidewalks down there and our intention is to get to Eighth Street and then make a decision, how exactly are we going to bring the sidewalk? And do the neighbors want sidewalk too? Because that's not always the most popular thing in the world for obvious reasons. People are closer to your house and, and walking on the sidewalk may be making noise or being disruptive. Sidewalks are a good thing. They're good for the community, people walk, do all those kinds of things. But it's not the easiest thing in the world to sell to people sometimes. That would be my personal opinion, looking at a crystal ball that one day, yeah, I would think that curb and gutter and sidewalk, Oak Street would be a logical place for that to get people out of the street so they can walk. It's pretty fast thoroughfare. You live there, as you well know, it's, uh, I don't know if it's arterial, but it's certainly a little faster. It may help you. They did not help, so everybody.
They help when I drive through there.
Any other comments, questions?
One, one little question. Heard the concern about one area fencing versus potentially versus shrub. Do I, do we need to go back and address that at all? My, my feeling is we've, we've got someone that's, I think, feels more strongly about having a fence than, and I can see where it would, it would slow people down from walking across the property this side and other. Is that something you could entertain?
Sure, and my, my lack of commitment to one versus the other had more to do with potentially the, the preference of the particular property owner. There may be some that would prefer one versus the other. Unfortunately, if the, the Irby property doesn't want fencing and the Daniel property does, it kind of defeats the purpose of Daniel property having a fencing. You know, it makes it easy for that person to walk just around the corner to fence.
Is that something that you could, you could get with them on and, and try to?
And I'm, I would be perfectly honest with you, the, I'm, the fence is more expensive, but the fence is not alive. It doesn't have to be, I mean, it has to be maintained, but I don't have to water it. I don't have to go back and replant it if a third of them die because we get a drought in August and so on and so forth. So I, you know, in, in the scheme of things, fence versus shrubs, they're peanuts compared to what we're looking to spend in that, on that four and a half acres there collectively.
I guess what I'm, I'm heading towards is, I'm not going to push the proffer idea on that, but could you just get with them on that?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Y'all can discuss that.
And I'll, I'll give you, I mean, you've got my word and Mr. Daniel, I.
Y'all can discuss that and I think it's straight without profit because you may run into a situation there that, that, that the others, you're going to have to get together with the rest of the group.
Sure, I, I'm open to that if, if, if you are and any of the other joiners are open to, we can have an adult conversation about that outside of here if, if you're agreeable with that.
It's quite a balance as to what's more attractive or what's more functional, so it depends on the landowner, I imagine. All right.
And so the recor-, so the record is clear. Uh, the proffers that he provided have the fence or, or shrubbery and no.
Site lighting.
Site lighting will be focused off-site. We agree with that and that's a little.
Actually, on-site, it will not be focused off-site.
Yeah. And the one other thing that would apply that Eric did agree to, um, that is actually not written on here is that this does permit outside storage. Do you intend on doing any outside? And when I say outside, boats, campers, trailers, any of that stuff.
Abandoned vehicles?
No, please, no.
Yeah, um, sorry, that was a private joke. No, sir, I, I, there's, there's no room for it really. Um, it, it blocks egress. Um, if somebody wants to store their Grady white there, they need to find another home for it.
Okay, so we can put that as a record that there would be no outside storage? Everything would be inside the building?
Correct, there's no outside storage.
That's clarified, thank you.
And, and we added thirty-five feet to the adjacent property lines.
Adjacent property lines, I guess that's the best way to define it. But so everybody here knows it wouldn't apply to that property line where he's proposing the townhouses on his own property. It'd be to the adjacent properties.
Okay.
That's the way you understand?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All right, then we can close the public hearing. You may.
Yeah, I got the board.
Would anybody care to make a motion regarding this and including the proffers?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. That passes, so then it'll become before the town.
I got one more item.
Okay, one more.
Specific to the same project. The town of Blackstone, uh, as you may or may not know, has, does and has permitted townhouses as a housing type in most of our zoning district. R two, R three, R B permit townhouses as a right. What is being proposed in the subdivision that you see are townhouses. And if you also see they're individual lots with each townhouse, just like we did on Bird Road, if you remember. There were seven units, not less than eighteen feet wide. Tessie has given us a legal opinion that indeed the townhouse development does allow the walls or the center of the wall, dividing walls to be the property line. And that's what's being proposed here, just in a larger scale than whatsoever on Bird Road, same request. Um, it is a subdivision plan, the road will have to be built of a V dot standard. It'll, it's intended to be accepted into the state system, uh, which means it's accepted into the town system. It's not going to become inventory of the, the state, it'll become inventory of the town, but the state will pay us for maintenance to fix potholes and push snow and do all those kinds of things. So it has to meet a V dot standard and it, uh, will be dedicated back to the town. The act of subdivision will actually dedicate the right of way to the town of Blackstone. There's some water and sewer lines that run parallel to the street, as you can see. Those also would be constructed by the developer and then given back to the town for maintenance long term. Up to the water meter on the water side of things and then the sewer, the entire lateral would be the ownership of the, of the property. We have one modification that we had to make, um, and we'll see how this one turns out. We had to open up the, uh, the diameter of the cul-de-sac a little bit. Our standards that V does acceptable is forty-five feet and that's the minimum that it's forty-five feet. So, um, I think we still got some discussions with wetlands and stormwater and all those kinds of things. It doesn't mean it's going to be paved forty-five feet, just the right of way dedication is a forty-foot, forty-five foot radius, ninety foot diameter. But in all other respects, we meet the standards of the town.
Gentlemen, what you got and ladies and gentlemen, what you see there is the most invasive version of this plan that, that I have proposed and, and what I'm trying to say, I guess, is once Armored Corps and DEQ gets done with me, I might lose a few lots here or there. So what, what's being proposed is.
It would not exceed that.
It would not exceed that. Is that, what you're seeing is the most invasive, uh, version or?
Is this twenty-nine units, did I count that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-nine units.
Okay, so for the public, let's hear, look at this, is the entrance going to be on Lester Street?
It is.
So this is the entrance, is that correct? So three count down? Four? Four, and three, four, four, and six.
And the one just to your, further to your right, is that, that area in the middle, that's a sediment basin right there.
And that's going to stay?
Correct, that'll be long term.
It's not there now, it'll have to be constructed.
It's not there, it has to be constructed and it'll be maintained under the, the, I don't want to say homeowner organization, but that'll have to continue to be maintained and, and we would ultimately be responsible for it long term for maintenance and care.
Are these more units?
That's four units every time.
Now, is this entrance still Lester or?
Those will run directly on Oak Street.
So the entrance would be on that?
Correct.
That's four units.
Or the street parking.
No, sir, no on-street parking.
No, he's going to provide the off-street parking to.
Oak Street.
Per unit.
So now, these are the units, is this the parking?
Each, each one has a, a one car garage, the plane that we have now, which fits inside of the twenty-foot wide foot planer. Will be a, a, a paved driveway with a one car garage. So we met the two car parking requirement per unit with that off-street. Understanding too that the road is actually built wide enough for on-street parking in the event of somebody's got a birthday party or what have you.
This being the on, this being the paved surface.
That paved surface is actually wide enough for on-street parking.
But the obligation to provide parking spaces must be met off-street.
Off-street, and it is.
Off-street. But if it's an auxiliary, you could.
Correct.
And those homes will be for sale, not rented?
That's correct, yes, ma'am, they are for sale on, yes, ma'am. By me, and what they do after that, of course, but our, our intention is to build them in several. We, we're anticipating a six to maybe even eight year, um, build out the entire development itself. You know, we anticipate maybe one building a year, so three to four units a year. so three to four units a year would, would, is our expectation to deal with, so that...
So when somebody has a party, where are all these people, extra people that are parked? On the street?
Well, I can't tell you exactly, but I would assume it would park, as he said, on-street here. The width of the street that he's proposing to build would be wide enough to handle on-street parking, if you look at Four Street, Fifth Street, those kind of streets that we curb and gutter, they're usually running forty, forty-five feet wide, forty feet to move and base, base to curb.
So if we get enough room to park, get someone to park there for another car to get through?
Correct, it could be two-four feet.
So you're gonna build another like an eight-year period?
I would, I, I hope, I hope it's a two-year period, but...
So whoever buys, the first one will have eight years of construction?
Yes, sir.
You hope it will fast?
I hope it will, yes, sir. And, and this is, we actually have got a lot of experience working in and around these developments, again, with our landscaping, which means working in Richmond for the Stanley Barnes, the H Huns, different, different builders that build subdivisions like this, and that's always been a thing that I've noticed, is, you know, the first house, the first few buildings in the subdivision, they deal with a lot of construction activities around, I, I recognize that that would be birthday, but that is, that is the case.
And perhaps maybe while they're being built, they will, one of your stairs or downstairs will park them?
I've got one, how is the construction of the townhouse?
How are they?
No, where are you gonna build them out of? Are they gonna be siding? Are they gonna have a brick front?
I don't, I don't know if this is the right time and place for it, but this is a very crude, you know, I apologize for not being able to, but a crude rendering of what generally we're trying to do, this is a four-unit building, this has got siding, if you look at any of the developments like this, or anywhere Lynchburg, Richmond, Roanoke, some of the bigger cities, you'll see that they try to make these, so it's not just a row of houses, I mean, in effect, that's what it is, but they, we, we're gonna try to do as much architecture as we can without driving the hogs through the roof, to mix the look of the frontage up, so different color siding for different houses, you know, a gable in here versus maybe a salt box roof on this one, and different angle like that is what they decide. I don't anticipate a lot of masonry on the outside of this, aside from maybe the, the foundation and footer, but, so anything much, much over that elevation is gonna be, is gonna be some sort of siding.
So, so basically, the foundation, it's not gonna be cinder block, maybe brick in the floor?
No, sir, no, it, it's gonna be, there, no, there's no way I can sell that. I mean, and, and what we're, and our, our goal here is to be under two-hundred thousand dollar price point, and, and I, I say that very, very conservatively, we're hoping for it to be much less than that, something affordable. Our, our thought here is this is a good entry-level community for young families, and give them someplace clean, reputable to live, it's not just absolutely overrun and, and done properly, done enough, that, that's our goal, so having a cinder block foundation is, is not really aligned with that much, so it would have to be, maybe some kind of stuning near possibly. A lot of it, I understand too, that as you enter into contract with, with fires on this stuff, there's a gigantic checklist of options, they can upgrade the foundations of this, and the, if they want brick on their fascia, they can do that, it costs X number of one dollars, so it's a little à la carte checklist.
This is just informational, we don't have any further action to take.
We gotta recommend approval of, of the subdivision to townhouse.
Oh, okay.
Now, from my experience, the location of these units that you're talking about, the first three or four will be close to Leicester Street, and if there's not any parking there, they're coming out on Leicester Street and they're gonna pop.
Man, well, I, I'm not saying you're wrong, but from a constructability standpoint, the way that we, the way that we need to build this, and this is from a construction perspective and a banking perspective, I don't get paid to put in the infrastructure, I only get paid proportionally as it's completed, so if I only put in the first hundred feet of that road, I've gotta mobilize the same equipment to do that first hundred feet as I do the last hundred feet, so it's in, actually, in our best interest to go ahead and get...
The whole road?
All the water sewer system, I'm not saying that we're gonna do that, may, maybe we cut it in half, okay, but, so that, we're not gonna just come in and do the first sixty feet of the road stop, and it'll just be dirt from there on out. You know, and it's kinda, our, our discretion how to do it, where it makes the most sense for us, but in my mind, going at least halfway through the development with the first phase of the construction makes sense, to get our utilities, to get the entrances, the curb and gutter, the pavement, at least the base pavement done, so that, you know, you're not dealing with a gravel road for four years until we put final pavement on it, so there will be parking, now, you know, the right party, I don't know how much, I own fifty acres, I had parties where we run out of parking, so the right party hits, and we all got a problem no matter what we do, so, but generally speaking, you know, the, the G-rated parties shouldn't, shouldn't be that much of an issue, and there, there will be some, some off-street parking available for anybody that's, that's not coming directly to the issue.
But I think really though, the town, and you all, needs to take a look at that area, and, and to look at how that street is set up, and relative to how you're gonna locate your pockets in there, to see if there's anything that you can do to maybe prevent a lot of on-street parking for Leicester Street, because this is really gonna cause a jam down there.
Right, I understand.
How far, I'm hoping, how far from the elementary school, primary school are these homes to be?
I don't rightly know the exact number, quarter-mile at least, more like, I'm guessing, that is...
So everybody knows too, that subdivision, the recordation of the subdivision plan would be one of the first things that happened. In order for Mr. Doran to record a subdivision plan, he has to provide the town with a surety bond, or a letter of credit, in the value of the street improvements, okay? So in the event of default, y'all decide this isn't profitable, we're not gonna do it, the town must still build the road, must still build the road, and it would be the town's plan that we would collect the bond, cash it in, and build the road, and that would have to be part of, before the subdivision plan is filed and recorded, that he would provide it to us a surety bond, and we've got another issue that we'll discuss tonight on the same topic.
My daughter's name is Leila, and my son's name's Trent, and my brother's got two boys, I, and Dad may have some different ideas.
I was thinking you have a name.
I, I really don't, I really don't, I, I've thought about that, and, and Phillip's asked me a few times, I was like, I...
I'd propose something, I keep Van Orbach Drive.
We can't afford the sign, it's too damn long.
No, man, we don't have, I, I'm open to suggestions, I really...
Is most of this land around these units gonna be paved, because there's no place for children to play?
There, well, there is a sediment basin they can play in.
It looks to me like we've got too many housing units in too small a space.
It is, this, our three, and I don't disagree with you, our, our three zoning is for high-density housing, and that's, that's what, we, we bought this as R three, and that, and that is our, our use by right under the current code for this. There are some green spaces, and that was one of the, this area here is actually gonna be relocated by this pipe, but this wetland area you see here, and all of this open space, is just unfortunately the nature of the beast when, when it comes to townhome developments. There's not a whole lot of super big backyard for kids to ride bikes and do stuff, that's just, that's the nature of the beast, it really is. I, I personally would love to be able to give everybody a two-acre lot to play on and pave a third of it so they can ride their bikes and shoot basketball, but it's just, that's just not the case in the situation, but you, you're right, it is very dense, and I think that's why the zoning laws is so, so strict on lot size, spread footage, and on the off-street apartments and so forth.
Some people would prefer, you know, what you've got there, because they don't wanna maintain a yard.
Ironically enough, that, again, our experience, and elsewhere in developments like this, most people, and, and it's kinda, it was always shocking to me, coming from a country or a more rural lifestyle, to go into a more urban, or metropolitan area and see people come home from work, and a lot of times where they're putting sod on the neighbor's lot when this happens, they get out of their car, and they're looking at their phone, walking in the house, lights going on, we never see them again.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, even though we have children in the neighborhood, we never see them.
It's, it's a different...
Kids don't...
I, I would want to raise my, I am raising my children differently, but there's, there's different groups for different folks, and there's some people that this is the, you know, that's the life they...
If I were a young family, and that's what you're trying to target, then my children would be riding in the street there.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is gonna be, because it's...
And maybe on Oak Street, and maybe on Leicester Street.
Possibly, yes, ma'am.
And you're the primary schools.
I think it rides in bikes on the sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am, but you're correct, it is, it is a very high, high-density development, but it is a use by right for that zoning. I feel like because of the mini storage, and, and our approach to it, and, and understand too, the, the consultant firm that we're dealing with, his specialty is stream and wetland projects, that's one of the reasons, we had a working relation, relationship with him previous, and understanding his mindset, it was one of the reasons with him, because it was, I wanted to find something that was a responsible balance, while maximizing the space, I'm here to make some money. I mean, I, I'm, we're talking about borrowing almost four million dollars to get that whole thing done, I'm, I'm gonna make something off of this. It might be the first time he heard it, but, but that was one of the reasons we selected him to, to do this, was to, to try to get as environment-sensitive a plan as we could, to maximize some green space, because it's, I mean, this is my town, I live here, not in the town, but I'm two miles outside of it, you know, my, my daughter plays softball a quarter mile of the road, all that, so that, you got a relevant point, but that is the use by right for this property, yes, ma'am.
And we were kinda hoping that a lot of the, the mini storages could be utilized by the people who are living in there, so that will reduce a whole lot of the traffic that we're afraid, and that some of you are afraid of, there's gonna be coming in and out of there constantly, we're hoping that the, the people living that have bought the townhouses will also kinda work with some of the mini stores that are due.
Anybody else have another question? I feel like Phillip, we kinda got away from the format there, looked at sorry, a little informal.
It's a subdivision? Yes, twenty-nine units appears to be fairly dense, but if he chose multifamily option, it would be a whole lot more dense than that, it would be appreciably more units permissible, whether or not they were built.
My, I mean, realistically, I'm, I'm down, and what Phillip's alluding to is, I'm downgrading my profitability on that piece of property, I could put a sixty-unit hotel or, no, no, apartment building right there, three stories high, and it'd be all asphalt pavement, and it just, I, I didn't want that, I, I think this is much cuter, I think this is much more sustainable, I think it's a better fit, so we've already kind, just to kinda illustrate to you, we've, we've already backed off of what we could do use by right with, to, to kinda, kinda back off to this, what we have here.
Okay, and our duty is to approve the subdivision plan. This is our next...
Typically, in a subdivision, based on our subdivision ordinance, there'll be a recommendation from the planning commission, thumbs up for thumbs down, and that recommendation will be passed on to council, either way, there's a sixty-day expectation that you will act in on it, if you choose not to act on it tonight, sixty days passes, and it's a de facto, pass it on to council, so it doesn't, doesn't languish, and I think it was intended so things like this wouldn't, wouldn't sit and be tabled and tabled and tabled, but council would receive it in sixty days regardless of the, the recommendation.
And they would receive in, in the end, a lot more information than this, to act on, it's, they'd have a lot more information than this to act on in the end, wouldn't they?
I don't know, I, I would expect that this would be what the, the town council would look at as well, maybe a little more information about the facades, perhaps?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, maybe a little more information on what it's gonna look like, those kinds of things, but the act is not the aesthetics of it.
Right.
The act of it is the, the compliance with the town...
I'll make, I'll make, but I will, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve it.
I'll second it.
All right. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, and we, all of y'all in the audience, the planning commission makes the recommendation to council, and the council meeting will be made for you, okay?
All three of the items.
And y'all, y'all will get another round of letters, any of y'all that got them before, y'all get another round of letters letting me know for the council meeting.
All three of the items will come back to council, there won't be necessarily a letter or a public hearing for the subdivision, but the two requests for the mini storage and for the, for the two apartments, there'll specifically be letters sent out to the, to the joint president. Yeah, we'll take it.
Yes, do we have a motion to adjourn?
You can just adjourn.
I will adjourn the meeting then, and I would recommend that you shut off the recording now.